Now, we're going to the next order of business is approving the minutes of special meeting from October 6th, and the minutes of our special meeting October 13th.
So moved on.
Bill, you're really fast tonight. So a motion and a second to approve both? I'm a, yeah?
Yes.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing none. We'll do this by roll call. Patsy?
Hi.
Steve?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Thank you. Bill?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so passes as unanimous. Thank you very much. Moving on, we'll do community relations announcements and open forum. So I'll read half, Patsy, and if you can squint, you can read the second half.
Okay, yeah.
There we go. So we announcements from the town clerk. Presidential election is Tuesday, November 3rd, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Heritage School. Reminder of early voting hours held at Town Hall are as follows. Wednesday, October 28th, 2020, and Thursday, October 29th, 2020, 7:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. After Thursday, there is no longer any in-person early voting in Charlton. Last day to request a mail-in ballot is Wednesday, October 28th, 2020. To ensure timely delivery of your ballot, it is recommended that you submit your application no later than October 20th. Applications received after October 28th cannot be accepted. Mail-in ballots can be returned in person to the town clerk's office, or there is a drop box located on the front of the Town Hall building, near the door closest to the handicap parking. All right, Patsy, want to take one to the next one?
I would be honored.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
From the Cultural Council, FY 2021 Cultural Council Grants Extended Deadline. The Mass Cultural Council, Local Cultural Council, LCC program, is the largest grassroots cultural funding network in the nation, supporting thousands of community-based projects in the arts, humanities, and sciences annually. Each year, LCCs award more than $3 million in grants to more than 6,000 cultural programs statewide. The program promotes the availability of rich cultural experiences for every Massachusetts resident. Interested in applying? The next deadline is November 16th, 2020. The FY 21 application went live on, in October, on October 1st, and is located here. So I'm assuming that we have this link somewhere on our website?
Yes. Should we end with the newsflash page, but might be down a little bit. Make sure it's reposted.
Cultural facility grants, cultural facility fund grants available. Arts and cultural organizations in looking for funding to improve their physical space can apply for MCC, cultural facilities, funding now through January 15th. Read the blog. It is, it's on massculturalcouncil.org. The link will, should also be posted in message for full details. From the Building Commissioner, the 2018 Energy Conservation Code will take full effect November 7th, 2020. Trick or treating is October 31st, 2020, 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Notice it's an extended time. Visit www.townofcharlton.net for COVID-19 guidelines for Halloween. The Town Hall will be closed on Wednesday, November 11th, 2020, in observance of Veterans Day. And that's it.
And that's it for announcements. Thank you, Patsy, for helping me read that. I appreciate it. Now, we will move on to open forum. So if there's anyone in, you know, on from the general public who would like to discuss anything, all I would ask is you unmute yourself. They have the ability to do that, yes?
Not, so they have to raise, either type in the Q and A or raise their hand.
And then if you do that, we will unmute you. And then I just ask that you identify yourself, let us know where you're from Charlton, and just see if you can keep it to a couple of minutes, two to three minutes. It's appreciated.
You see Rob raising his hand, and I think that's one of our issues, one of the things that we have on our old business, so.
Right, Rob, want to let him talk for a second? He can go, if he wants to go now, I'm fine, but it's up to you. Rob, do you want to wait till old business, or do you want to do your announcement now?
Um, no, it's all right. I'll wait till old business. It's fine.
All right, we just love you having, having an audience out there, so.
All right, I'll come back to you, Rob.
Yeah, one more meeting for Rob. It's all good, right? What is it, right? All right, anyone else raising their hand? Andrew, I can't see.
Uh, nope.
All right. I see, wait, was that, okay, it's gone. All right, moving on. Appointments and resignation. The first one is Appointment EDC Members. Andrew?
There are three positions left to be filled on the Economic Development Commission. One Conservation Commission member, one Board of Assessor member, and one Resident Business Owner. The Board is asked to appoint the following. Board of Assessor Member Nancy Landry, Resident Business Owner Tarek Markowski, Marikowski, sorry. You are also being asked to consider alternate appointments and make the following. Brett Moore is Alternate Board of Assessor Member, and Josh Saper as Alternate Resident Business Owner. I'd ask the Board make the appointments as indicated.
So moved on all the above, unless the Board objects.
Second.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. We'll take a roll call vote. Patsy?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Passes as unanimous. Thank you to one and all. Congratulations.
Welcome.
Yeah, welcome.
Absolutely.
All right, the next appointment would be Insurance Advisory Committee Retiree Member. Andrew?
Attaches a request to appoint William Bedard as the primary retiree member for the Insurance Advisor Committee. I would recommend the Board make the appointment.
So moved.
Motion in the second. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. David?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Patsy?
Aye.
Vote aye. Passes. It's unanimous. Thank you to William. All right. Next, we don't have any scheduled appointments, so we'll move down to new business. Elderly Exemption 41(c)(41). Andrew?
In previous discussions with the Board, Chairman Speewig had requested the town look at ways to further reduce the financial burden of a debt exclusion on senior citizens with fixed income if the public safety building project passes. In discussions with the Board of Assessors, there are a variety of current tax exemptions that are found under Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5. Specifically, Clause 41(c)(41) provides exemptions to seniors who meet specific ownership, residency, income, and asset requirements. Under Clause 41(c)(41), seniors who are under the age of 70, who meet the eligibility requirements, are allowed an abatement of up to $500. By vote of the legislative body, the town may reduce the eligibility age to 65, and the total abatement amount to a maximum of $1,000. The Board of Assessors are currently reviewing this option to provide a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen if these eligibility requirements and abatement amounts should be amended at the next town meeting in recognition of the upcoming debt exclusion. Additional information regarding the 41(c)(41) program is attached for your information, so.
So I would like to thank you, Andrew, and the assessors, and I think Donna helped out a little too. Everyone who did help to look into this. I know I kind of asked this a while ago. So when do you think we'll have a recommendation, like at the next meeting?
This is before their next Board of Assessors meeting. And obviously, you know, by the next meeting, we should have a clear direction as to whether or not the debt exclusion is still in play. But ultimately, to approve it, we'd have to go to town meeting for adoption.
Okay. Any questions in the Board?
So this, to the chair, so this is something that has to be voted on at town meeting? The abatement piece?
Correct, yeah. The statute, the state statute is, sets it at seven, you know, the 70 and 6, or in $500, but it's the town meeting has the option of basically increasing the amount that's allowed, or and/or decreasing the eligibility date. It's all, you know, it's all local tax-based impact, so.
Perfect. And I do want to mention, just because I pulled it up now, that Noreen, someone in attendance has asked if the reference detachment is available to the public for review. Just to let you know, everything we discuss, all the attachments, documents, absolutely, they're all public records, and we will make them available. So yes, it is.
And I believe there are also links to it on the Board of Assessors page. So we'll make sure we provide that.
Yep, thank you, Andrew. Anything else?
Yeah, I do have one question. So as far as the piece that needs to go to town meeting, the entire abatement process does, or just the eligibility age, the age difference from 70?
Just to change the eligibility age. So if you want to make it more accessible, you know, to people five years younger, you know, than 70, or if you wanted the ability to abate additional taxes over and above $500. What you can't change, though, is like the income eligibility statutes of those, or the asset requirements.
Okay, that was my, because that wasn't clear. So then, then, so then what we're reading here now, and I'm trying to, I'm reading it on my phone, the actual, the Selectmen can just take that recommendation if the assessors give it and vote on it, and that part, as-is, without any changes, and that doesn't need to go to town meeting.
Right, and that, you know, that's just, that's by state statute that seniors are allowed to do that. Doesn't involve any local acceptance for anything, or for the $500 or to qualify under 70, over the age of 70.
Okay. I don't think a lot of people know that's out there.
Yeah, I believe in the conversation that I had with the assessors that it's about 10 people that apply for it currently.
Yeah.
Or at least are, apply for it and receive the abatement right now.
So Karen, through you. So just to piggyback on Second Cronus's point, this already exists, so people can apply for it. It's just a matter of what we're discussing is, do we want to make it more beneficial to seniors? And that could be something that could be voted on at town meeting. So if you have any questions about it, reach out to the Board of Assessors now.
Great point, Bill. Anything else? David, you all set?
Yeah, I'm good.
Great.
All right. And we'll move on. Thank you again, everyone involved. We are moving to, totally lost. Building Commission Bylaw. Sorry, I should put my glasses on.
So following the annual town meeting, Building Commissioner Kurt Meskis, Legal Counsel Jim Cosgrove and I have been working to draft amendments to the town's local bylaw that oversees the authority of the Building Commissioner to fit in line with the Mass General Laws, which oversee the operations of the Office of the Building Inspector, which are MGL, Chapter 143, Section 3, and the town's Human Resources General Bylaws that govern the oversight of full-time appointed officials. While we're still in the process of finalizing formal recommendations for the consideration of a Board, I have attached, attached, I found, please find the draft amendments that are currently being reviewed. As the proposed bylaws are being drafted, I appreciate any feedback from the Board on the changes that are currently being considered.
Any comments from the Board or questions from the Board?
Not yet. I only, but, I'm sorry, good chair. I only went through it once, and I want to redo it again before I can kind of take it all in. And it seems like the recommendation from Attorney Cosgrove is sort of, kind of, I'm in the middle of all this?
Well, I think he's kind of still in his preliminary kind of, you know, we're still kind of working through this to figure out what changes need to be made. I did get a communication from him earlier today and talked to him on the phone. You know, he was pointing out, you know, kind of the, some of the appointment pieces of it, you know, where if you look under the Mass General Law under 143.3, it prescribes like the chief administrative official as the appointing authority, where our bylaw states the chief executive official, which is the Board of Selectmen. So, you know, it's just certain things that we want to put before you guys to say, do we want to keep things the way they are? Do we want to change them? Do we think that there's a better way of doing it? You know, just those certain pieces.
Great, thank you.
But any, you know, any input that you guys see on this to say, hey, you know, we really think that this should be here, this should be, this should be in here. Let me know that we could try to write it in, so that we can try to get some, some more finalized drafts in front of you guys for consideration before annual.
Thank you. Madam Chair?
Yep, David?
Just pointing out, there was a question in the Q and, from Noreen Johnson Smith, just asking if the reference document is available to the public. Can you please answer that, Andrew?
Yeah, we actually, didn't we, all of them are available. I think that question's been hanging there. I don't know, right?
Yeah, yeah, we addressed that one, Dave.
Yeah, it's, yeah, sorry about that. All right, so all set. We'll move on to old business. So Rob Barton's here from the Public Safety Building Committee. Is he still here, I hope?
Yes. Rob, I just thought, promoted you up.
Awesome.
It's not going to last long, though.
Hi, Rob. Hello. Hi, Chairwoman and Board of Selectmen, Andrew Golis. How are you guys?
Great.
So, um, if you haven't read yet on social media, there's been some, some exciting news from the, the bid that went out to, the bids went out, and the bids were received on Friday. So we had a total of nine general contractors pre-qualified to bid on the project, and we received four general contractor bids back, which according to Tecton and Vertex, that is about average. Usually you get about half of your actual bids compared to what you pre-qualify for. So the, the four bids that we received, three of them are within the same grouping of dollar amounts, and one of them is a slightly larger, about $1 million more than the lowest bidder. So the low bid is a company called CTA, and their bid for the entire project, all-inclusive, from the minute the shovel goes into the ground to the minute they turn over the key to us, is $22,025,000, so $22,000,500. Hutter is $22,495,000. Fontaine is $22,555,000. And then our high bidder was DA Sullivan at $23,123,911. So we met on Monday, very briefly, just to make the announcement to the, to the town and to the, to the residents that were waiting to vote till they heard of the number. There was some concern that the number was going to come in much higher than what we were allowed. And Vertex Engineering, who is our OPM, they presented a budget sheet for us. So there's some soft costs and some contingency money and fees that are associated with this project. So if we went with a low bidder of $22,250,000, and we added in all of the soft costs and contingency money, it comes to $25,466,500. Minus the $367,000 that has been raised so far by the capital campaign through donations, that puts the total project cost at $25,025.1. It's $25,099,500. So we'll say 25.1, and that is for the whole project. I'll be more than happy to answer. Any breakdown questions or that anybody may have?
Through the chair, and questions for Rob. That's, so that 25.1 is, isn't the total cost of the project? It's the amount that we would end up borrowing for the debt exclusion?
So it is, it is the total amount of the project if we need to borrow the full amount. And what I mean by that is, CTA has come in and they said $25.1 million, or, I'm sorry, let's go back. CTA has come in and said, we will build your building for 22025, 22 and 1/4 million. But there's obviously these soft costs and fees that go into it. So Vertex Engineering has given us a budget of 25.1 million. And there's a $1 million contingency in there, and we can talk a little bit about the contingencies. The construction contingency is, in the event that we have change orders that take place, something's just not right, something's not, it just seems to be odd. They find something that we weren't expecting. There's about, there's a $1 million of, we'll call it emergency funding in there. So it prevents us from ever having to go over that $25.1 million. We've, we've made the line items pretty, pretty good, the budget, consistent with the other projects that Vertex and Tecton have taken, have performed, and feel very confident that our number of 25.1 will get us the building ready to open up.
Thank you, Rob.
I'm chair.
Yeah, Bill?
Rob, you've answered this question 5,374 times, so.
I believe it's going to be slightly more than that, but yes, but go ahead.
I want to ask this one last time, so you never have to answer it again.
Can you guarantee that? I'm sorry. Can you guarantee that I'll never have to answer it again?
You can say they can ask me next time.
Okay, all right.
Any way outside of some type of force majeure that a, that the, that the winning bid or the selected bid can come in over that number, with the exception of us doing change control? So if we change nothing, can, can they come in over that amount? Do they have to cut scope, if simply forced, based upon their binding bid, to pay for it with what they have bid?
All right, so to answer this, it would be a very odd occurrence for the bid to come in, or for the final dollar amount to be more than 25.1. And I mean by fairly odd, I mean like extremely odd. Something happens on the town end where a plane falls out of the sky and falls on that piece of land, and we can't start construction for nine months or 11 months. Then the contractor has the ability to say, hey, I was planning on putting a shovel in the ground back in March, and you guys told me I can't start digging until December. That's going to push me back, so there's going to be an increased cost. Something as simple as like a major war is declared, and all of a sudden, we can't find steel anywhere, is another rare occurrence that can happen. But people have made references on social media about unable to find two-by-fours or building material, unable to find vinyl fencing, windows are difficult to find. All of those difficulties, the contractor has taken into consideration. He's given us his bid, his bid of 22 and 1/4 million, takes everything into that. If he has to pay more money for overhead garage doors than what he normally would pay, that just cuts into his side of his profit, we'll call it, and it doesn't affect us at all. It doesn't come back on to us at all. Like you said, unless we make some major changes where we move walls around, and we move windows around, and we change roof lines, and we eat up that $1 million of contingency, and then we keep giving him more and more change orders, that would be the only way that it would come back on us. But we have, our team has worked tirelessly reviewing these plans. And if you want to review plans all day long, it's, it's not enjoyable. But we've had so many eyes look at these plans to make sure that, you know, who's, can you figure out who's like?
Someone needs to mute themselves, sorry. Not you, Rob.
No, I know. I'm like, I'm looking around if there's a, I was running around. We've had so many eyes look at these plans to make sure that there's nothing that is going to spring up, that there's, it all makes sense. We've actually made so many different changes to the plans already, because we've caught so many things that would have cost us money if we didn't catch them now. So I don't see a large number of change orders happening at all, and I don't see us even coming close to that $1 million of contingency money.
So unless there's an act of God, or we made a mistake and/or changed our mind, that number's not going up. So I, so I hope everyone finally hears that for the final time, and Rob.
You know what, and I'll, and I'll say, until I started in getting involved in this project, I had no idea about bidding laws. And I know when I built my house over on McKenzie Road, I bought my house from my contractor, and the contractor ended up going up with his price based on the things that I put into the project after I bought the house, you know, as it was under construction. And I said, well, can we change this? And we can, you change that, and can we do this upgrade? Can we do that upgrade? So the, the dollar amount that I agreed to wasn't the dollar amount at the very end, because it's all the things that I changed. But private bidding, or private commercial, private residential, private commercial, it's just much different than public bidding laws. And you, we have, we have somebody in town, if anybody wants to know, they don't want to take my word for it, they don't want to take Tecton's word for it, who's our owner's project manager, and they don't want to take Vertex, or Vertex is our OPM, they don't want to take Tecton as the architect. We have a contractor right down on P and P, right down on Burlingame Road. They, they're the ones that did the addition over in the W Fire Department. They did the addition renovation. Everybody's more than willing to go down there and talk to that gentleman and ask him that question. Is a contractor has submitted a bid for $22 and 1/4 million. Is it possible for him to come nine months into the project and say, hey, you know what? As a matter of fact, I made a mistake. It's actually going to be another $1 million, or another $2 million. And he'll tell you, under public bidding laws, under public rules, that's not allowed. And again, I didn't know that until I actually started getting involved in this project.
Any other questions for Rob?
No, other than the fact that I'd like to thank Rob for all the work he's done on this. And, and to me, it almost sounds like, like a little bit of a blessing in disguise that it failed last year. Because look at all the fantastic information. They've got exact pinpoint costs and information we have now. It's, it's, I think, or it's, people, people can now completely understand that the, and all the work's been done. Money's laid out and the whole, you know.
You know, Selectmen Cronus, it's, it really has been a challenging year, or a little bit more than a year since it failed in August. But I agree with you that the best thing that happened was for it to fail. Because if it would have passed last August, we would have signed, we would have been able to go out to bid, and we would have probably signed with a general contractor, I'm going to guess sometime in February. And COVID was really just beginning then, and the general contractor would have come in with his bid, would nobody have anticipated COVID and the work stoppage and the work shortage that took place all throughout New England and all throughout the country. And the townspeople would have been asked to pay a much higher price for a building that today, $22 million, $22 and 1/4 million for the construction of the building, and then obviously the soft costs and contingencies and fees, solves the challenges that the townspeople are facing with police, fire, emergency communication, and emergency management. It actually solves four problems. One building, $22 and 1/4 million for the building, and $3 million, or 3.075 for contingencies and soft costs. Just understand, the other thing is, the town of Southborough, who is a comparable community as far as number of police officers, number of firefighters, number of residents, and I understand it's a, it's a wealthier community, but they actually, they actually, as a matter of fact, they have less, they only have 10,000 residents, and we have 14,000 residents. But as far as fire and police, they're very similar-sized departments, and their building, they're completing it as we speak. They've been in the building for about a year now, or about nine months, and they still have a bunch of change orders and a punch list that takes place usually after you move in for another year. So their final number is coming in at almost, like, I think it's close to $2 million less than what they had originally appropriated. So this number here of 25.1, through the efforts of our, our committee, through the efforts of the OPM and the architect, understanding that we're not going to be pushed over by the general contractor. Through the efforts of the finance, I mean, the fundraising committee, there is a, an extremely high probability that this 25.1 number is even going to come in less. Once the building is done, and once the building is built, and once the building is turned over to, to us. So we're solving a lot of problems, and we've done it well. Our last estimate, I told Karen the other day, our last estimate that we got in September, or early September, was $31 million is what they were. um, or early September was thirty-one million dollars is what they were coming in as an estimate. It's what the estimators were saying it was gonna cost us. Thirty-one million and through some design changes and, and some work hard and through, unfortunately, through COVID. Um, I guess it's probably the only good thing that's come out of COVID. Um, we went from thirty-one million to twenty-five point one.
With reduction costs and yeah, and everything else. That's, you know, I, I can remember one meeting, probably in July. We were at twenty-one million for a fire station only.
So we did ask them to do a projection just so we knew, so that way when the residents say, well, how much would it be for a fire station only? And this is another question, um, it's probably not as high as the one that Bill, uh, kept track of, uh, kept the count for. But it's up there and people ask, well, why can't we just do a fire station only? And we a hundred percent can. It just doesn't solve all of the four problems that this one building is solving. It's, this one building is solving police, fire, emergency communication and emergency management. Um, but a fire station only solves the fire problem. And we had them give an estimate and they did the, the same space needs is what we are putting into this building. And we didn't make it bigger because it was a fire station only. We said, just keep the exact same square footage, um, and how much would it be um, for a fire station only? And they came back with, if we did it then, it was nineteen million dollars. But because if this fails and we, the board of selectmen decide to pursue a fire station only, we have to go to town meeting and get funds for the design. So we kind of start all over again. We have to hire an architect, we have to hire an OPM, we have to, um, get funds for design. Um, and then we have to go back out to bid and bid documents and then go out to bid and award the bid to the lowest bidder. So it ends up being probably about close to a year delay, nine months to a year delay. And then that just is escalation cost. So it was about twenty to twenty-one million dollars for a fire station only. And people say, well, how is that possible when you can do a public safety building? And why is it, you know, that much more for a fire station only? Because it's not, when you're doing a public safety building, you're doing one building and a lot of, even though it's forty thousand three hundred square feet where a fire station only, I think is, I don't know off the top of my head, I think it's like twenty-two thousand square feet or something like that. It's cheaper to build a forty thousand square foot building than it is to build a twenty-one thousand square foot building because the machinery is already there and the machine's there, the machine's doing the digging and he just digs a little bit more. It's definitely not half price. It's not twenty-five point one for a public safety building and you know, thirteen million for a fire station only, we could cut it in half. It's, it's definitely not the way it works. Um, and again, you would, I would love if it worked that way, but it doesn't work that way, unfortunately.
Thanks, Rob. And as, as you also mentioned, um, time and time again, i- if we want that route, we still would need to, you know, the, the police station is about thirty years old. We know there's needs and we'd have to wind up putting Band-Aids on that. And the Band-Aids would cost millions. So it makes sense. And I know you've said this before, but just remind folks that I, I want to say when it passes, should this pass, when the, they would actually see the tax increase. It's in twenty twenty-three, is that correct?
Yeah, so, um, two points. One, um, we had them very briefly look at the police station to see what they need done. If we were to do a fire station only, um, they would need to, um, add an elevator because it's not ADA compliant. Um, they would have to add a bathroom, they would have to move some walls around. They'd have to do a significant increase to the communication center to improve that system in there, um, repair the cells, um, fix the leaky roof, um, and add a fire protection system and, and, and again, these are just estimates, but they estimated that to be about five, five million dollars. So, um, and then what they were expecting is that would gain them about five to ten years in that building. Because it doesn't improve their square footage. And that's really the thing is if you look at the posting that we've done on social media, what they currently have for square footage and what they were, what they're gonna go to for square footage in the new building, renovating the current building doesn't actually improve their square footage. Their square footage stays the exact same. One more point about that is people say, well, why can't you just add on? Because this, there's wetlands to the left of the current building. And anytime you go to the left, you're actually gonna have to push that driveway over to the left and you can't push the driveway over to the left because there's a big downhill and there's a, a, a drop off and then there's wetlands. People say, well, why can't you build our current, how can you build a new building in an area that has wetlands? Because there's a, it's just wetlands in a certain area. There's a, there's a, a stream that take, that crosses between the existing, um, police station and the proposed site for the new building. So we can't go to the left because like I said, we would have to push that driveway that goes around the back of their building and that's not possible. We can't go back because of the wetlands. If we were to go backwards, then we're actually pushing the back parking lot backwards as well. So that's not really, uh, an, an, an option as well. It was never designed to put another story on. So we don't have the ability to renovate the current police station. And the tax increase, uh, checking with the assessors office and the finance office, um, if it gets voted through in November, uh, or next week, next Tuesday, um, the first increase to the taxpayers' bill would come in February of twenty twenty-three. It would be the first bill uh, increased to them with the last debt exclusion rolling off in FY twenty twenty-five, which is the highway facility.
Excellent. Thank you, Rob. And you're meeting, the, the committee's meeting tomorrow to actually take the formal, the official vote. And then there'll be more information and I'm su- I'm assuming on social media and um, the press in general.
Yeah, there'll be, uh, there'll be a couple of press releases and we continue to put stuff out on social media and continue to answer questions from, from citizens.
Yeah, and then the final thing that I'll mention is the, um, the, the public safety building site that people can go to that, to get their questions answered as well. So thank you for that. I know you must be dreaming about it every night, Rob. So thank you for getting, helping to get the facts out. Um, and actually what I'd like to do, just because it, it makes sense, we will be talking about the our goals, but I just would like, I see Noreen, um, is on the co-chair for the Capitol Campaign. She let her, and I think she had a quick question and then just give a quick update and, um, and this, then we'll move on to our goals. Noreen, did you, is that okay?
Thank you. Yep, I just, um, I just didn't want, you know, I get lost first of all in the excitement of a twenty-two million dollar bid. That's wonderful. Um, could we just reiterate where you get to the twenty-five point one million total? So that's twenty-two plus a one million dollar contingency plus one point four already allocated for the project. So that's twenty-four point five approximately. I just want to be.
Thank you.
Thank you, I was gonna ask if I could share my screen, but it's right there.
I got, alright, I just want to make sure you can actually see the right screen because I got.
Yeah, that's it.
Alright.
Thank you, that's.
How's that, Noreen?
That is, that answers the question right there.
Awesome.
That answers the question. That's very helpful. And so there's quite a bit of IT involved, um, that would be expected. And I'm just, uh, that's considered under soft costs. Great, very helpful.
Alright, did you want to give a, a quick update, Noreen, for the Capitol Campaign? I know we're meeting Thursday.
Sure, we are meeting Thursday and, um, I'm just trying to uh, undo my view here.
And I know, um, Rob actually had the amount, we, to date, we've got about three hundred and sixty-seven thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Raised or pledged and raised.
Yeah.
Uh, and we, and, and Rob did mention this, we will continue to raise money and that number will continue to be lowered because of the funds being raised as we promised.
Yeah, three hundred and sixty-seven, one seventy-five is our current figure raised. And we have, um, multiple people who have verbally committed to the project. And whose gifts we have not yet received. And I think in part, people are waiting now on the vote to see if the vote goes forward, then they will, um, realize their gift. So we're, we're waiting on a few of those. And I think that's my update. And we're continuing to ask, actually, can I use this moment just to explain what a Capitol Campaign is? I know that sounds, um, somewhat introductory and we've been using the term for quite a while, but I think some of the questions that I've seen on social media are people that don't do this every day and aren't involved in fundraising activities necessarily. Um, so a Capitol Campaign, this campaign is not run by town employees at all. We are private citizens who care about the community and who want to, uh, we know that there are dollars out there that are part of philanthropy, that people who are, um, interested in making investments in the community are around. We know they're here. And so we have agreed to volunteer to go asking on behalf of the town. And so we've been out on nights and weekends, um, Saturdays, Sundays, and every night of the week, sometimes at lunch break, um, out asking people in the town to help support, uh, the community to build this building. And that's done on our own time. So I just want to answer the folks that think that we have any interest in this building beyond caring about our firefighters and our police and, uh, providing them with adequate facilities. Um, I have no personal interest in this. I will benefit not at all unless, God forbid, there's an emergency in my home and someone needs to respond in a timely manner. But, um, in that way, I benefit like every other citizen in Charlton who will benefit from improved services and a stronger workforce and a faster response time. So I just wanted to make sure we kind of reviewed that. I know not everybody has done fundraising in the past. It is something I do professionally as well. So I've been volunteering and donating my services to this effort. Um, and I know we have a number of other members on our committee, um, who have experience in this area fundraising. Um, and we're all doing this, uh, pro bono just to be helpful. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear to the, uh, residents of the town.
Thank you, Noreen. Alright, um, again, thank you for your efforts and I will, I'll see you on Thursday.
See you Thursday night, right?
Alright, great. Alright, so moving on, we'll move back up now to our, uh, goals discussion, next steps, Andrew.
So attach all the goals that were discussed by the board at your meeting on September first, twenty twenty. Selectman Borowski asked for this item to be on the agenda so the board could discuss the next steps.
Yeah, thank you, Andrew. Karen threw you?
Yeah, okay, Bill.
Yeah, so long story short, I don't think we need to get into a deep discussion tonight. Rather, I just know from the last meeting we had, I know, I think it was Dave, uh, Mosky had sent an email requesting some information about it. And I just wanted to make sure that, you know, basically with, with all we have going on, that I didn't want to get lost in the shuffle. So just to kind of bring it back under old business so we can schedule just some time, probably in November or whenever, to really focus on those top goals that we want to do for the rest of the term, rest of the year, you know, however that we want to do it. So literally, this was just a reminder to all of us that we need to finish them. It's probably a kind way to say it.
Yeah, no, I appreciate you requesting it, um, Bill. And actually, for things like this, for items like this, we probably should just have them as placeholders every, every, every meeting and we can always pass over them, but it's, it's there as a reminder. And any questions or comments, Patsy?
Through the chair. So I've been thinking a lot about, um, our situation with, uh, DPW. So years ago, I know it was discussed and then we could go back and forth on it. So, um, with this list as here, I, I kind of want to add, um, looking, kind of researching the, um, benefits of um, creating a, a DPW in town. You know, the pros and cons. So I, that's kind of, it's really a big project. So I'd like to add that to one of, to our goal sheet.
To be, be combination of the.
Water and sewer.
With, um, yeah, with, uh.
Right, there's many different options. I mean, all towns do it different ways, but, um, I've been just kind of doing some reading up and a little bit of research and, and and whether it's right for us or, or not, um, we could get all the people who, who can add, can be part of that discussion to see if it's something that we should think about or, um, if it could save us some money, um, if, if, um, it's right for our town. So, I mean.
We'll add it to the list.
He agrees.
No, I know, I know, I agree. I, I, I'd like to, I'd like to at least explore it and see if there, there, there were slight differences between a DPW and a water and sewer commission, but there are also a lot of commonalities, right? I mean, they.
The water, I mean, I think with the DPW, I mean, from what I, from what I read now, and, and anybody can correct me, that we would actually kind of get rid of our water and sewer commission and create a department that oversees highway and water and sewer and kind of have its, and, and that would sit under the town administrator.
Uh, uh, Madam Chair, Patsy, I don't mean to cut you off. And again, I, I'll.
You can correct me again, I'm.
No, 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 not that. Rather, I will defer to the majority of the board. I would just caution that my discussion was really around next steps and not really to get into specific goals because if we're talking around departments consolidation, we should do that when it's posted, not necessarily tonight. Again, I'm not, Patsy, I'm not trying to step on your toes at all.
Oh, no, no, I, I agree. I just, that, that's just my thought process. So I'd like to add that.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I think any other goals that any of us have, I'd just recommend sending them over to Andrew and then he can, sorry, Andrew, but you can just add them to the, uh, to.
To the long list.
Patsy, I wasn't trying to cut you off. I just, I, I just didn't want to get down, down, down a rabbit hole where someone says you guys were talking about something you weren't supposed to be.
Good point. Nope, agreed. Alright, any other additions before we move on? Or Andrew, any other comments about our, the existing list? No?
It's fine, we'll just try to find time.
Alright, excellent. Alright, moving on down. We don't have any, uh, policy review to review, uh, student, ah, Henry, you're up. Student select person report. Um, we have a new select, uh, students rep with us tonight. Henry, you want to give a little introduction?
Yeah, sure. So I'm Henry, uh, Henry Wild, and I'm a senior at Shepherd Hill. And I'm the class treasurer. I serve on numerous committees, uh, the Dudley Charlton Leadership Council with Superintendent Lamarche, the Principals Advisory Council with Principal Chaplin, the School Council with the principal and both the assistant principals. And I'm treasurer of the National Honor Society Chapter as well. And during the summer, I served as a Bank of America Student Leader, a national program which incorporates, um, student community leaders from all fifty states. And we researched ways to end systemic poverty. And specifically, I researched public education reform and specifically Massachusetts.
Impressive, thank you. Alright.
Yeah.
Take it away.
Would you like me to share my screen or, uh, just read it?
Whatever you're comfortable with, whatever you want to.
Yeah, I'll share my screen, so it's a little easier to follow along. Can you see the, uh, document?
Yes.
Alright, perfect. So, uh, I'll start from the top. Uh, so, let me try to get the mouse over here. Okay, I'll move down like that. Alright, so on September sixteenth, Shepherd Hill started its first day of remote learning. And this year, we started with fully remote learning with a hybrid phase in later. So with remote learning, uh, each student had six periods. That's, uh, changed from seven last year. And school ran from seven thirty to one fifty with a fifty, a forty-minute lunch, which was a nice switch. Um, with the, uh, remote learning, it was a, a little strange being at the computer each day. Teachers had to find new ways to engage students. Uh, it was obviously a little hard for students to be at their computers for so long. But definitely, I found it effective, uh, ample live instruction. So, uh, then on October fifteenth, Shepherd Hill transitioned to a hybrid learning model and students were broken up into cohorts, uh, mainly divided on the alphabet. But to balance class sizes, uh, gender, stuff like that, they switched it around. Uh, cohort A and B were alphabetical, one being the upper half, uh, the other being the lower half. Cohort C was approximately ten percent of the student population and that's for a group of students who needed, uh, extra instruction, live instruction in school. And cohort D was made up of the special education, uh, students. And, uh, cohort A and B each attended school, uh, right now. Each attends school for a half day, uh, two times a week each morning. And the other cohort, uh, attends live instruction classes in the afternoon, the one that didn't go to school. Cohort C is in school every morning and cohort D is in school every morning and afternoon. And students and teachers both benefited greatly from the in-person classrooms as compared to the. And students and teachers both benefited greatly from the in-person classrooms as compared to the online classes. Uh, definitely the soc- socio-emotional connections students experienced in being in school, being around their classmates was beneficial. And teachers also liked having the students in front of them, being able to easier, easily engage them, uh having the spark, so to say. And uh in the school, they did a phenomenal job of safety protocols. Uh, each student self-certifies every morning. Uh, that's for athletics, for bands, uh for contact tracing purposes. Uh, we had divided hallways, uh up-down stairwells, sanitization. We wiped down our desks at the end of class. And so every student felt safe and secure in the building. Though the windows are open uh every day, so it might get a little cold in January. So we'll see how that goes. But however, in hybrid learning, each student does receive a significant amount, uh less amount of live remote, uh live instruction. During remote learning, each student is uh face-to-face with the teacher for twelve thousand minutes a week. And through hybrid learning, uh only four hundred and fifty. And obviously they have asynchronous work where, work they do on their own. But still, students receive seven hundred fifty minutes less of in-person instruction, which can disadvantage AP students, uh students that take rigorous classroom, class loads because um students are, were learning less than what they would have been in a normal school year. And as a result, a parent petition has been circulating to alter the form of hybrid learning. And the link is right there. And for activities and sports, uh, sports are going on, uh with the exception of football and cheerleading. Uh, obviously modifications, masks, uh ninety-minute practices and only competitions in a geographic pod of schools. So uh not, we don't face our Midland-Watchousette League, uh, Watchousette-Algonquin, uh Shrewsbury. And we face this year more local schools, Lester, Tantascro, Southbridge, that sort. And the music department is also practicing. Uh, obviously no competitions now. But they're hopeful to have their first ones in March and maybe may would be a little bit more realistic. And finally, the National Honor Society is conducting the Haunting on the Hill event as kind of like an alternative to uh trick-or-treating. So parents uh can drive their kids through the campus. It's going to be decorated. Um, all the social distancing, sanitization procedures will be there. And uh there's an article about it in the Charlton Villager, so they're very excited. Any questions?
Any questions? Well, thank you. Much, much appreciated.
Thank you. Good job.
Yeah, excellent. All right, so we will move on to the town administrator report. Andrew?
Right.
Just, Andrew, you're following, you're following a, a factor right there.
My standards were set, absolutely.
So uh I'll find it to be a little bit more brief. So the uh, the police department will be participating in no shave November and December as they did last year. Officers who choose to participate uh donate a minimum of fifty dollars a month to enjoy the lax in shaving restrictions. If the Board doesn't have a major concern, contributions from November will go to will go to a veterans' cause, ho- uh the Home Base Foundation. December's campaign will be directed at the Charlton Race Foundation for help, which helps Charlton residents obtain fuel assistance. Um, the twenty twenty-one license renewals, our office has started the process of the twenty twenty-one license renewals issued by the Board of Selectmen. The renewal applications have been sent to business owners and a list of license holders and type of licenses they hold will be provided to you at one of your November meetings for approval. Uh, you will need to come in and sign them all, though, unfortunately. So that is all I have.
And and you will be there a long time signing them, for those of you who have not done so. Thank you, Andrew. Any questions for the town administrator? All right, hearing, hearing, Henry, you good?
Oh, yeah, I'm all set.
All right, all right, hearing none, we'll move on down to other business unknown at time of posting. I don't believe we have any. Andrew? All right, our next meeting announcement. So our next uh regular meeting will be held November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty at six thirty PM. And now um we'll have a motion to adjourn to go into executive session.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adj- uh to go into executive session under MGL Chapter thirty-eight, such as twenty-one eight, number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, VGG. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares, then we convene an open session for any other business if needed and to adjourn.
And the chair does so declare. So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, motion is second. Um, we'll do a roll call, Patsy.
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
All right, now Chair votes aye. We announce executive session. I want to thank everyone for um
Thank you.
And have a good evening.
Bye, everybody.
All right.
Now we just wait.